Dublin City Council, we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a number of scouts in the audience. Could every scout that's out there at least come forward? Anne, do we have that microphone that doesn't have a cord on? Come on, don't be shy. First one of you grab that microphone and come over and tell us who you are and what troop you're with and hand it to the next guy. Go ahead. Hold it right up to your ...
Okay.
Now face me.
My name is John Ryerson and I am a member of Troop 200.
Next.
I'm President Jit Saho and I'm a member of Troop 200.
I'm Eric Lustino and I'm ...
Is it on your sleeve? Is it on his sleeve?
I'm 116.
There you go.
Nice.
My name's Thomas Ryerson and I'm from Troop 200.
My name's Alex Lustino and I'm a scout from Troop 200.
My name's Ben Moffett and I'm a scout from Troop 200.
I'm Chris Polat and I'm from Troop 117.
Would you gentlemen be kind enough to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. Go ahead.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate having you here. And, guys, I'm Tim Leckleiter, Eagle Scout, Troop 236, Kettering, Ohio.
Cub Scout, Troop 614, Hagerd, Ohio.
The Brotherhood. Okay, special recognition and proclamations, Parks and Recreation Month. Matt, you want to come forward?
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the county, including the city of Dublin, and whereas our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental wellbeing of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities and aid in the prevention of chronic disease, providing therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled, and also improving the mental and emotional health of all of our citizens, and whereas parks and recreation areas improve water quality, protect the groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide for vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Dublin recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of the Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2016 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Dublin, Ohio, and urge citizens to explore our parks and participate in some special activities scheduled throughout the month of July in Dublin.
Thanks, Matt, appreciate it. You want to make a couple of comments about the program you're running?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. You know, I was asked a couple of weeks ago, why does Dublin celebrate an entire month for parks and recreation? And, you know, my first thought, the way I wanted to respond to that was, you know, there are thousands of other communities and parks and recreation agencies across the country that are doing the exact same thing, so I guess if we didn't do it, people would ask why we didn't do it. So, I didn't respond with that, but that was my first thought. But, you know, when I look at, you know, the engagement from this community and the appreciation for the park amenities that we have and the recreation programs, you know, it goes without saying that, you know, we celebrate parks and recreation daily here in Dublin, and, you know, we're all very fortunate to have the opportunities that we have. So, what we have going on for the month of July, and I don't know if Colleen made her way, oh, there you are, way back there in the back, do you want to come up?
Oh, come on, Colleen.
Colleen Borland is one of our Recreation Services interns, and she's been challenged with putting together a month's worth of free activities for residents of the community. So, she's been very busy, so I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about some of those programs, a little bit of summary of those, so let me turn over to you.
So, many of the programs are already put on through the REC Center that we just want to promote and get people out using them. So, a lot of them are, we have yoga outside, out at the Sciota Park, we have some paddle boarding, some kayaking events that are going on. We also have come up with some events, so we want to promote our Dublin Mileage Club, which is an event over at the REC Center that the Fitness Center holds, and it just promotes people to go out biking, or swimming, or walking, and you can come in for every charm earned. For the month of July, you will be getting entered into a prize, but it just promotes people to get out and exercise, to get with friends. We have some families who do it together, and they try to see who can get the most and stuff like that. We also have the Skate Park Celebration, which is just going to be a big event with food, we'll go for a little bit of safety, and just to open up the park for everyone to see. We also are doing Movie in the Park. The theme for NRPA is superheroes, so on July 22nd, which is the skate park opening as well, we'll be doing a movie in the park with The Incredibles, which is a big inflatable movie screen, and you can bring snack, foods, there'll be some popcorn and some beverages there as well, and that's pretty much all the events that we have going on.
Great, thank you very much, Colleen.
And I'll just finish up with saying that, you know, we can't make all this possible with council support, both past and present, and certainly our dedicated team to creating these experiences in those parks and the recreation programs. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you, Matt, very much, obviously.
If I perform that steps away, I heard July 22nd, some sort of event about the skate park?
Yes.
Okay, will council be invited?
Yes, there will be more information coming directly to you on that opportunity as well as outreach to the community.
Mike, bring your skateboard and helmet.
I was just getting ready to tell you to bring your skates before you ...
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. We have an issue to address with Tiffin University Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You have a memo in your packet concerning a partnership that we're very proud to announce tonight between the city and the police department and Tiffin University. And this is kind of a renewal of a partnership we had back in the early 2000s, from 2002, I think, to 2007, I think that's when the partnership was, and we are restarting that partnership, and Tiffin will be offering master's level criminal justice courses at the police department, starting in August, although temporarily while we are undergoing renovations, some of these classes will be at the REC Center. So, I wanted to introduce members of Tiffin University staff. This is Kevin Cashin, the retired chief at Norwalk, Ohio, now with Tiffin, Lacey Ellis and Nikki Hensa. Did you want to say something, Kevin?
Thank you for this ...
There you go.
All right.
Welcome, Kevin.
Welcome, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to work with Dublin. Dublin Police Department has had an excellent reputation throughout the state for many years. Obviously, I'm retired, so I've known Heinz for quite a while, you've got a great chief there. What I'm really excited about this program is that we designed it with a practitioner in mind. We brought together a cohort-based program where 30 graduate credit hours will be earned in just over a year. We are focusing on educational topics that are germane to being a practitioner, so personnel practices, they're actually going to get two courses in personnel practices, policy analysis and development, they're going to have to complete a capstone and put together a portfolio that they can take with them upon graduation. What I really like about the capstone is we've designed the capstone instead of a true thesis to actually be individually tailored to the specific department or city so that everybody benefits. So, we're really excited about this partnership and we can't wait to get started and looking forward to working with Heinz and the Park and Rec and being in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Now, Chief, it's my understanding a couple of officers that go through the program as well?
There will be scholarships available for our staff, yes.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Great. Council, any questions? Chris?
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, good luck to you. Citizen comments, no one has signed in, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Sir, could you come forward?
Sure.
This would be for an item that is not on our regular agenda, is that right?
Yeah, well, it's connected, and it's really just a thank you related to the ...
Your name and address, please.
Bob Moffett, I'm at 5667 Kenfield Drive in Dublin. But it's a thank you to really the hidden gem that we have in the bike paths. It's a great, it's really, it gives the community, my family, and the scouts that are here a great opportunity to really explore Dublin. I love how it connects all of the parks, and this last few weeks have been a great time to get out. So, when I saw the Parks and Rec Month, I thought it was a good time to just get up and say thank you for providing that to the community, so thank you.
Thank you for taking the time and coming in and mentioning it to us. Now with it being summer and kids are out and about on the bike paths, they can get to pretty much any other neighborhood in Dublin safely, and we as parents don't have to be too terribly concerned about them getting ...
Kids and the adults as well.
And the adults, well, you know. Thank you very much for coming in. Anybody else hearing and seeing no other hands? The consent agenda, there are only two items on the agenda, I would make a motion that we treat these motions collectively as a consent agenda unless someone would like to have either of them removed and placed on the regular agenda. So, I would ask for a second. Anne?
Mr. Leckleiter?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Introduction and first reading ordinance 24-16.
Amending the annual appropriations for fiscal year ending December 31, 2016.
I'll introduce it. Angel?
Good evening, members of council. Ordinance number 24-16 would amend the 2016 appropriations. An appropriation simply takes funding that is available within each of the respective funds in the fund balances and allocates it to the proper expenditure account. Ordinances such as this are routine pieces of legislation that gets the funding in place for commitments that have been previously made. The majority of the funds requested are related to capital projects that were approved as part of the 2016 through 2020 CIP. Those projects, many of which have contractual obligations that the city has entered into in order to get those projects underway, and us, as such, we need the funding necessary to meet those contractual obligations. The staff report provides a detailed explanation for each of the requests, and with that, staff request that council approve this ordinance at its next meeting on July 5th, I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions?
I have a series of questions, if you'll indulge me, thank you, this is ...
Sure.
In your memo, under Section 1, it talks about the second paragraph, the second bullet point, talks about seeking reimbursement from the previous owner of a property that we purchased.
Yes.
Do we have, are there any updates on the status of seeking that reimbursement, or what modes of action do we use to seek that reimbursement?
Well, we invoice the property owner, and traditionally when this has happened, we haven't had an issue recouping it. What we wanted to make sure is because the property is in the city's name, that we didn't show up as being delinquent if we didn't pay those, so we will pursue this like we do any other accounts receivable by invoicing the property owner, and then if necessary, if they don't pay, then we would go through legal action.
Okay, but the way that I read it, I wasn't certain if maybe we weren't convinced that we would receive that payment, that we would seek it, but it may not come. But we have the expectation of receiving it.
Okay, apparently Phil Hartman can speak to that.
Sorry, Angel, I thought I'd help out. I handled the litigation on this. This was a settlement for purchasing the Dale Drive properties, where Cota's going to be, and also a road's going to go through there. We deposited the money with the court with the entry that transferred the property, and in that entry it said that they shall be responsible for the taxes, so we're just petitioning the court to get that money back. We don't anticipate any problem, we just weren't sure what the amount would be at the time, so we didn't want to do it then.
Good, okay. My next questions are primarily under Section 5. It talks about the retaining wall at the Indian Run High Street improvements to better coordinate work with the adjacent private development. It says the additional $4,863,000 being requested reflects the actual bids and updated cost estimates for completing the roadway as required under the development agreement. What, did that come in significantly over budget? You know, I see here that we sold the bonds, I'm sorry, in the previous bond sale, 11.1 million have been used for Block C, and we're requesting additional nearly $5 million.
So, 11.1 million dollars was for blocks B, C, and Z, which is on the west side. So, as per the development agreement, the city was responsible for the cost of those roadways. There were some options within the development agreement that once those got bid, because they hadn't been bid at the time that the development agreement was entered into, that the city could value engineer those, they could pay whatever the bids came in at or some combination thereof. So, value engineering did take place. Block C came in at a little bit over $8 million, and then in order to go ahead and get the work going on North High Street and for the retaining wall, in North High Street as well as the North River View extension, were both projects that were incorporated within our 2016 through 2020 CIP, that funding was in place for those, albeit we were expecting to issue future debt to do those. So, we went ahead and used some of that 11.1 to go ahead and start that work. North River View hasn't started yet, but to do other work on North High Street, and then we had the west side, that work came in at $2.7 million, and so, and I would be more than happy to put this in writing if it would make it easier for you to delineate out.
Before the second reading, that would be great.
Yeah, and so the balance left is used to then go towards Z Block, and then we had to incorporate the cost for the North River View extension, the streetscapes, and the retaining wall. So, much of this is for kind of an unrelated but a related project, projects that we were going to be undertaken. Anything in excess of the 11.1 for simply B, C, and Z would get reimbursed under those minimum service payments and/or the TIF revenues that are dedicated to repay that.
And I see that there are a couple items that when they went to bid, they came in over estimate. Is this one of those? Is that why we're nearly $5 million that we're looking to transfer at this time, over and above?
Well, that also includes the additional money for North River View. It also includes the improvements for North High Street.
Okay, if we could get a breakdown on that before the second reading, I certainly would appreciate that.
I would also just add that some of that also had to do in leaning forward on that with construction sequencing, because we wouldn't want to go back and try to get that done after Z Block was going in, so there was a lot of timing coordination that caused us to lean forward on some of that.
Good. My second part of the question in Section 5 talks about it being discussed during the 2016 CIP of issuing additional debt for roadway improvements. Can we get an idea of what the, let's see, would be the third full paragraph, in that says funds will be advanced from the city's general fund? The next sentence says, however, is discussed during the 2016 CIP, staff anticipates using debt for these, issuing debt for these roadway improvements. Is that additional debt that we are going to issue?
Yes, as part of every CIP, we propose what projects we would pay for with cash versus what projects we would pay for using debt. That can change from year to year, just depending on things that maybe have already taken place. You know, the CIP shifts, it's kind of a fluid process. We get it approved in September, but a lot happens between that September and then the next one, so we reevaluate that each year, but certainly those particular roadway networks were contemplated to be funded through debt.
Okay. If we have any idea of the, if, you know, as you're moving through that process of the amount of debt we might be looking at, the earlier we can get that information, the more helpful it is to me. So, when you have that information, I certainly would appreciate it. My next question is about Section 18. It talks about the Tartan West TIF, and it addresses about payment revenue and collections generated with the TIF since its inception, but it talks about outside review.
Yes.
And can you tell me a little bit about what that means?
Certainly. The Tartan West TIF is really, for all intents and purposes, our only residential TIF that exists prior to what was established within Bridge Street. One, we are dealing with Union County, so the county is the one who levies the property taxes, and I guess in lieu of property taxes, the payments in lieu of taxes, the service payments, because there is a TIF in place. So, there has been questions that have been raised by representatives from the developer as to the accuracy of the value placed on the properties. Generally speaking, the city does monitor our TIF revenues. With commercial properties, it's very easy to track, we get a listing of all the valuations for every parcel within each TIF. When we're talking about a residential housing development, where you have hundreds of houses, to some extent you rely on the county auditor assessing those taxes, just like they do any other property taxes. So, that has been questioned as to whether the amount that has been assessed by the county has been accurate, and so in order to provide an unbiased opinion or a review of that, we have engaged a third party to take a look at those and work with the county auditor. The developer has also done the same thing, so it was really meant to just be an independent analysis of what had been done.
And have there been findings? Do we know anything?
It is still underway, but I do know that through work done by the developer and working with the county auditor, there were some corrections made, and we have received some of those payments. Regardless, any revenue that we receive within that TIF goes directly into the Tartan West TIF fund, it cannot be used for any other purpose.
My next question is with respect to Section 28. It talks about a study for the Western Roads, France Road, Dublin Road TIF, Western roadway alignment, and it was, in a previous year's CIP, it contemplated it 650,000. We did not spend those monies, but now you're looking to reengage that same study. I think that we have seen the, is that the same study that we've recently seen the results for?
All indications is no, it's not. It's a separate study that's going to be underway.
Okay. So, I wasn't familiar with another study about France Road and Dublin Road, I think we just did a France Road character study, and we've done some ...
We did the Office Competitiveness Study, which has some connection to that, it's probably what you're recalling. This has to do with that western end of Bridge Street relative to the new interchange, the competitiveness study, and then how do we treat that intersection at France and 161 in the future?
Okay.
Is what this has to do with, so.
My last questions are with Section 33, about the Tollertif, and it looks like we got a bid for 7.7 million, little over 7.7 million dollars. The budget was 7.3 million. It talks about the content of that 7.7 million dollars is 3,100 feet of new roadway, stormwater, AP duck bank that's reimbursable to the city, some street lighting and electric, permeable pavers, brick walkways, cycle track, demolition of temporary Cota Park and Ride trees and planting. So, my question is surrounded by, what is the portion of that that is the demolition of the Park and Ride?
I don't have that number, I will have to provide that in a follow-up memo.
And are we holding true to our numbers? Because as I read through this, it looked like we were at about $2,500 a linear foot for the construction of John Shields Parkway with this bid, and is that consistent with the other phases of where we are with linear foot pricing of construction?
Megan, is that something you can answer, you want to check on that? We'll check and get back.
Okay, that'd be great. Those are all my questions, thank you, look forward to all that information before the second reading.
Good questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions?
I just want to thank Angel, but, you know, for the sake of brevity, since a lot of us have gone through all this, that maybe, Chris, you might consider asking Angel these questions Thursday or Monday leading into the meeting, since I think a lot of us are familiar with these, and it's sort of repetitious, so, just a thought.
Any other questions? Tim, anything? Mike? Just anything? Nothing? Okay, we will revisit this next Tuesday night, our next council meeting. Ordinance 25-16, Anne?
Adopting the Crossroads Area Plan.
I'll introduce it. Tim?
Good evening, members of council. As you know, the cities of Dublin and Marysville, as well as Union County, Jerome Township, known as the US 33 Innovation Corridor Group jointly authorized the LUC Regional Planning Commission and Planning Next to conduct the Crossroads Area Plan Study. Councilmember Leckleiter served as your liaison to the US 33 Innovation Corridor Group and continues to serve in that role, along with myself and other members of staff. This plan's intended to build consensus among the US 33 Innovation Corridor Group members regarding land use, infrastructure, and economic development for an area at the crossroads of State Route 161, Post Road, Highland-Croy Road, and US 33 Post Road Interchange. You might recall Jamie Green of Planning Next previously gave council an update on this plan a couple of months ago. It's our intent for introducing ordinance 25-16 to get the draft planned before you, so you have time to begin to start getting familiar with it and reading through it and taking the time to get more familiar with it. At this time, no other jurisdiction has adopted the plan. I know that they are under active consideration right now. It is under active consideration with the other jurisdictions. I can't predict right now when they may or may not adopt it, but we'll keep you up to date on that. It's very likely, given that, that we will ask you to postpone this at your very next meeting until we have more information as to how the other jurisdictions are progressing. There is one more meeting yet this week to look at some language, potential language changes, but I wanted to get this before you in its introduction format, I appreciate the introduction again, so we can start to get the public familiar with the plan itself as well as yourselves. I'm going to be followed by Vince Papcidero, he's just going to go over a few quick high points of the plan.
Thank you, Dana, good evening. I'm just going to very briefly walk through highlights of the plan and happy to answer any questions of council. So, the purpose of the plan is to develop a common vision for land use, infrastructure, and economic development in the area of US 33, State Route 161, Post, and Highland-Croy, what's been called the crossroads as part of this planning project. And in terms of central Ohio, this is a fairly unprecedented planning effort, this kind of joint planning, doesn't happen very often. On this map, the red star shows you the general location that we're talking about in terms of the US 33 corridor, the innovation corridor that's really driving a lot of regional development in this part of central Ohio. This map shows you in yellow there, the dash line, the planning area boundary that surrounds the interchange on US 33, and in the pinkish colors, Jerome Township, Union County, and the green represents the city's current corporate boundary. So, you can tell there graphically kind of a sense about the mix in terms of jurisdictions as they stand today. This slide shows you on the left, the land use policy of Jerome Township, and the land use policy on the right is of the city of Dublin, representing our community plan. In each case, you see some consistency where those policies overlap. In other cases, for instance, for our plan in particular, we show a stronger emphasis on economic development as befits the corridor. The township shows a more mixed use, more residential, particularly north of State Route 161. These differences were assessed as part of the planning process by the consultant working for Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission, which managed the project. This is the land use map that is a result of the planning process, tried to draw consensus among the jurisdictions in terms of what the future development pattern should be in the area. For the most part, actually for our side of the planning area, it's completely consistent with the city's community plan. You'll notice a hatched area in gray and black towards the upper part of the image, that is the Jackman Farms property. We were not able to reach consensus between the township and the city, and as a result, that ... reach consensus between the township and the city, and as a result, that piece of the plan is left blank. There are eight points of agreement in terms of moving forward as we, as development occurs over the next few years. One is to formalize a protocol between the township and the city to consult prior to the submission of zoning applications. We're doing that now by sharing agendas and calling each other at the staff level to provide a heads-up when a case is being filed that might impact this 900 acres that we both overlap in. The other is to create a stronger coordinated development review process among the different review bodies, kind of building on that relationship. The third is to continue to improve transportation infrastructure within the corridor, something that Dublin has been leading for quite a while now. Fourth is to create stronger physical development standards, so that we have consistency across political boundaries between the city and the township. Fifth is to explore an annexation boundary to try to bring some clarity to what development potential might be within the corridor, given the different utility service areas. Sixth is a recommendation to think about conducting fiscal analysis of future land use as another piece of input to land use decision-making down the road. Third, this speaks to actually amending the official, our community plan, their comprehensive plan, to make them consistent with this document. As I mentioned earlier, the current draft future land use is consistent with our community plan in terms of the Dublin's portion of the area. And then finally, to continue to work together, report annually, continued coordination, working through the 33 Innovation Group that's in existence today as we proceed in the corridor. So, that in a nutshell is the summary of the plan.
I'd just like to add that, you know, I think some very positive things have come out of this. I've emphasized this before, but I'll do it again. And that's a lot of good cooperation between the city of Marysville, Dublin, Union County, and Jerome Township. I think it was good to hear Jerome Township talk, and it's mentioned in the document about some pre-planning processes being strongly considered relative to traffic impact studies and things like that, which has not been a previous practice. We'll see if that holds true through more review of their process. But I do think there's an acknowledgement that more of that could happen. It's whether they'll state it in this plan and so forth. We'll continue to follow up on that. And I certainly want to give Councilmember Leckleider, certainly your opportunity to comment on this as well.
I don't know that I have a lot to add beyond what I've said previously, and certainly Dana and Vince's both memo summary in our packet, as well as their statements here this evening, I think summarize it well. Yeah, I do think a lot of good has come out of this. Not only, you know, between Dublin and Jerome Township, but the relationship that I believe that we're building and strengthening between ourselves and the city of Marysville, Union County, and Mill Creek Township and so forth. And as we all know and can see, you know, there's a lot of development pressure in this area, and that's why I think it's important. This is a good starting point. And I think it's important that we strongly consider our adoption of this plan. I think it's a good place to start. I would ask that, and maybe we've already done this, but I would like for us to be more proactive in contacting the residents that have been engaged up to this point. You know, I think that we should have a contact list. Certainly, we can contact the HOAs that have been involved. I think we know who those are. But I think we probably have a contact list. From the presentation that we did at Jerome High School, there might have been other places where we collected. I don't know. I guess I'll leave it to you guys. You're more expert in...
Well, we can certainly do that. We did notify through, as you mentioned, the neighborhood association leadership for this meeting.
Great.
We will circle back through Jamie Green to see if he has the, and/or the LUC, see if they have that mailing list and make sure folks know. Pretty much knew we were going to be asking to put this off for a later approval in public hearing, but we're going to need to get that information out, plus what we're posting on the website and so forth. So, certainly we'll do that.
That's great. That's great. I mean, because it's summertime and, I don't know, maybe this is kind of a, I don't, you know, dead period, if you will, you know, while we await the Supreme Court's ruling on the referendum and so forth. You know, I don't want to say people have gone to sleep, but they might be taking a break, you know, so to speak. But I think it's important for them to know what action that this council might ultimately take with respect to adoption or not of this plan.
So, I'd just like to add, Dana, that it would appear to me that there's been quite a mindset change. Hopefully, there has been. Because early on, when this process was first started a number of years ago, there was a mindset there, especially in Jerome, that nobody should be planning that area except them. And as we know, planning, when you're looking 20, 30, 40, 50 years out, it really involves all the entities, including Dublin, Marysville, Union County. There's a lot of competing interests there that need to be included. And it sounds like it's gotten more inclusive, and I think that's very positive progress. I appreciate your work on that, carrying the water, if you excuse the pun. I am disappointed with the gas station out front of Costco. And I think that we do need to put an emphasis on the traffic studies. Had we done that, we might have a little better result over there. But that's a really key, key area. So, keep up the good work.
Anybody else? So, we'll just wait, Dana, for a second hearing date?
Yes. Yes. I would anticipate, well, since we're postponing next week, I would anticipate August. But I, again, I think we should really monitor what the other jurisdictions are doing. And I was hesitant to introduce it and then postpone it. But at the same time, I wanted to give you all plenty of time to review it and read it. And if you have comments, certainly let us know. And there'll be public hearing, obviously, for that as well, so we can massage this document if you have concerns.
There's no reason to believe a vote will be taken at the next council meeting?
No. No, we will ask to postpone it on July 5th into August.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Resolutions. Resolution 38-16. Anna?
Amending the Agreement for Law Director Services.
I'll introduce it.
Good evening, members of council. This resolution has to do with the appointment of Jennifer Radler as the Director of Law for the City of Dublin. As you know, Mr. Smith, who's in our audience, has served the city of Dublin and its residents for 38 years, if I'm counting on all my fingers and toes and then some. But, you know, certainly very proud of Steve's history and service to the city. That doesn't mean that Steve's retiring by any stretch, but that he is going to assume a slightly different role, more in a specialized advisor, if you will, legal advisor to the city, as well as his other clients. But I'm proud to recommend your approval of this resolution, appointing Jennifer Radler as our Director of Law.
Steve, you're going to have to come up.
I guess I would have two comments. One, looking back the last 38 years, you know, when it comes to a leader, you look for a calm, steady hand. And that's what Steve has provided for the city for almost four decades. So, we greatly appreciate his service and the things that he's done for this community. Looking forward, Jennifer, who's been getting actively, more actively involved over the last couple of years, has certainly displayed that same kind of leadership ability. So, we know we are in good hands. Is there anything that you, we can drag out of you to say, or?
No. Really, I thank you all for trusting our judgment over the years. And I think Jennifer is more than ready to do this job. And my only concern is, my wife wants me to find something to do on Monday night, so I won't be home. So, I'm going to try and find some hobby for Monday nights. But I appreciate the opportunity to have what is commonly referred to as a full career here in Dublin. It's been an incredible ride, and I appreciate it. But let's look forward to Jennifer and the 14 or 15 people on the team that we have at our firm. Thank you.
And I'm sure, you know, we'll have further opportunities to visit with Steve and his career and all those sorts of things. But Steve, does the council have anything they want to say? Tim?
Well, I just want to say that I want to emphasize, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve's not retiring, okay? I just want to be clear. He's not retiring.
No, I'm not retiring, sir.
I'm just stepping down from that. Relinquishing a title.
Yes, sir.
But I will expect and hope that you will otherwise remain fully engaged. I know you will. And I know we look forward to that, as we look forward to Jennifer, you know, stepping into this role and the rest of your team, you know, which has served us so well over the years with your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve, I just wanted to again say, thank you for the four years of service. And I think you've done an admirable job, really guiding us for the last 30, 40 years to creating one of the most interesting and successful cities in the country. So, thank you.
I'd just add, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. And it's gone on, I own 34 years now with the township. And we did a lot of projects together between the township and the city in those years. And I've certainly enjoyed the time and your counsel during my time here on city council. So, thank you. And as I said, you're not going away. I know we'll be picking on that brain for quite some time, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anna?
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm proud and honored to be serving in this position for this great city. And I appreciate your faith. Thanks.
Maybe a formality, but I'll let you... Oh, big honor.
You're official.
Yeah, good luck with that, Jennifer.
We have those at our office. And the guy that takes care of that always reminds our people that they slide in and they slide out.
There's no screws involved.
Just as easily.
All right, moving right along. Resolution 39-16. Dana?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Mesh Fitness for Shared Recreation Services.
Good evening again. Staff has requested postponement of this resolution this evening to be taken up.
Did you want to introduce this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll introduce.
Okay. Staff is requesting postponement of this resolution for future consideration. We also have the opportunity, perhaps, expand this with some other facilities. So, I want to look at that a little bit more broadly as we do that. You may see as soon as next Monday. However, I did ask the clerk to advertise today a resolution with Corazon. Their owner reached out to me last week and offered to make their indoor and outdoor pool spaces available during our rec center shutdown. We've got some things to work through with him this week if we're able to make that happen. And we're not sure we can get through those, but we're going to try. And I would just want to thank him for offering that. And then we have a couple other facilities that we've actually been talking to. So, we may look at this a little bit more comprehensively and add it to the list. So, I'm not sure when this will come back. I'm assuming in the latter part of August, probably at the earliest. So.
Thank you, Dana. And sometimes we need to adjust the agendas for things that develop. Now, I don't want to make that inconvenient for anyone that might have come in. No one signed up to testify. But is anyone interested in testifying about this particular resolution that came out this evening for that purpose? We certainly would hear what you have to say. Otherwise, we will postpone it until staff fully vets a couple of more issues. We'll bring it back. It'll be on the calendar, and everybody will know when that's going to be. So, not seeing any hands, we will leave it at that, and we will move on to the CIP stuff, I guess, huh?
Yes. Just to open this discussion up. So, as you know, we're coming into capital improvement program season, I'll call it, in preparation for the next five-year CIP. Some feedback that I received from council earlier this year was about the notion of a little bit more input upfront on the budget process and a little bit more times for an iterative discussion on budget preparation. So, in the spirit of that, I have asked Angel to prepare a financial update. This is typically the financial update forecast we would give you at the workshop, the council workshop, in August. But I'm going to borrow that time tonight and do it now, so you can kind of be thinking about that. If you, you also have at your seat a copy of the presentation that we're going to be doing this evening. I just want to speak to these first couple slides. So, in the spirit of what I just talked about, June 27th would be this, obviously, this presentation tonight about the fiscal conditions and revenue projections relative to the CIP. July 5th will not be a presentation, but we will be giving you a staff memo with a inventory of what we see as the maintenance needs and project list or project enhancements for the upcoming CIP. This is an inventory as best staff can do it. It's based on what we know. It's based on things we've heard council mention that they have an interest in, as well as the public. I'm not going to profess we have everything on that list. I will tell you it's pretty comprehensive. I'm asking that if you can, between now and August, or between now and July 19th, I hate to put this homework assignment on you, but if possible, if you could look that over and if there's some items that are not on that list that you would like to see considered as we put together our draft CIP proposal, we'd like you to advance those to Angel and myself, so that we can include that. We'll do our best to put a cost on that and incorporate it for consideration. And then on August 10th is your next council meeting, your first meeting in August. That's Wednesday after the Irish Festival. And we will introduce the CIP ordinance, as we typically do. That's just an introduction. And you'll also receive the administration's proposed CIP, looking at that list, looking at the fiscal condition and revenue projections, and then trying to do the best we can to do a proposal based on what we think your priorities are, or what we suggest as priorities to be considered for maintenance, new projects, new construction, and so forth. Then on August 15th, we will have that CIP workshop that we traditionally have. And that'll be the first opportunity to have a dialogue about what the administration proposed. And then on August 22nd, theoretically, we would be able to respond to items and issues you may have raised at the council workshop and get that back to you. That's a really short fuse between a workshop and a council packet that we need to go out by Friday. We'll do our best. Not sure that we can do that. I would almost anticipate that probably September 12th may actually be your second reading. Obviously, this is a straw man, if you will, proposal on timing. You can have as many meetings and workshops as you desire based on our presentation, and we'll stand ready to do any and all of that that you'd like to do. So, but this is just how we kind of see the schedule flowing in the next few weeks. And with that, if you don't have any questions about that, I'll hand this over to Angel to review the fiscal condition.
Thank you, Dana, members of council. Tonight, we're going to focus on the resources available to fund the city's capital improvements program that ultimately become incorporated with the CIP document that is adopted by council. This includes cash and debt funding, both of which are funded through our income tax revenue, property tax revenue, our cash in the form of fund balances within the general fund or capital improvement tax fund, TIF service payments, repayments of advances, enterprise funds, and any other funds that exist that can help pay for capital improvements. We will start first with our cash coming from the income tax allocation. The primary source of revenue for our capital is the income tax revenue. As you are aware, when the voters approved the income tax increase from 1% to 2% back in 1987, it was done with the stipulation that 25% of the income tax revenue would be dedicated to the capital improvement tax fund. So, since the increase went into effect in 1988, that allocation has been in place. Of the 25% that is in the capital fund, the city's practice has been to allocate 60% of that amount to fund projects by issuing debt and paying the respective debt service, while the remaining 40% is allocated to cash fund projects. For the time being, I will focus on that 40% cash allocation. As our primary source of revenue for not only the capital, but also for our operating budget, income tax revenues are very important and are analyzed on a daily basis. Since 2009, when the recession hit Dublin, we haven't experienced a decline in income tax revenue until last year, in 2015, when our year-over-year receipts fell 0.32%. This was attributable to the loss of Verizon, which was one of our top employers. We discussed this during the first quarter financial update. Based on that loss, as well as the anticipated reductions in the workforce from Chase, as well as JP Morgan Chase and Nationwide, our original 2016 estimate for income tax revenue reflected a 5.1% decrease over our 2015 actual receipts. However, through Friday, our income tax receipts were up year-to-date 1.95%. As such, I have recommended to Dana that we revise our 2016 estimate... takes into account the reductions at Chase and Nationwide, but also gives credence to the growth that we are seeing in our other businesses. And it is consistent still with our conservative planning. As such, our two thousand and sixteen revised estimate would go to eighty-five-point-five-nine million dollars. Again, carrying forward the reduction in workforce from Chase and Nationwide, we are projecting a two thousand and seventeen estimate that shows a one percent decline over two thousand and sixteen. And then from there, because at that point in time, we should have realized all of the loss from those two employers, we are projecting moving forward a modest one-and-a-half percent increase year-over-year. These estimates will become the basis for the revenue for the capital improvement program. So, continuing to look at that forty percent allocation to cash fund projects, the income tax revenue projections that I just mentioned would result in available cash resources for projects ranging from eight-point-five million dollars to nine-point-one million dollars annually over the course of the next five years. In keeping with our income tax funding, I'm now going to shift gears and discuss the sixty percent that is reserved for debt. In addition to income tax revenue to repay debt, we also look for other sources of revenue. So, where there are improvements made in our TIF areas in which there are service payments to repay that debt, we would use those revenues to repay the debt. We would look to enterprise revenues within our water and sewer systems to pay for the improvements made in those areas. We have in the past had debt that is retired using special assessments that are levying on properties. We also have debt that is repaid using property tax revenue as well as hotel motel tax revenue. When we contemplate, pardon me. When we contemplate issuing debt, there are a number of constraints that we must take into consideration. First are the direct debt limitations that are imposed by Ohio Revised Code. Simply put, our general obligation debt, which is backed by the full faith and credit of the city, is tied to our assessed valuation, so the value of all the property within the city of Dublin. Generally speaking, that amount of debt cannot exceed ten-and-a-half percent of the total assessed valuation from the city. Our unvoted general obligation debt is limited to five-and-a-half percent of the total assessed valuation of the city. So, based on an AV or assessed valuation of over two billion dollars for this year, our limitations under ten-and-a-half are two-hundred-and-ten million dollars and under the five-and-a-half limitation, one-hundred-and-ten million dollars. When we talk about our direct debt limitations, you must consider debt that per Ohio Revised Code is considered exempt in terms of the ten-and-a-half and five-and-a-half percent limitations. And when we look at that, and generally speaking, exempt debt is considered, is general obligation debt that is paid for using income tax revenues, TIF funds, or utility revenues. So, when you look collectively at all of our general obligation debt, the majority of it is considered exempt as per Ohio Revised Code. As of the end of two thousand and fifteen, while we had one-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars of debt outstanding, only six of it was considered non-exempt for those ten-and-a-half and five-and-a-half limitations. That still leaves a significant amount within those direct debt limitations that's available to be, be issued. So, within our ten percent limitation, we would be at two-hundred-and-four million dollars of additional debt and within our five-and-a-half limitation, it's one-hundred-and-ten million. Our second consideration is our indirect debt limitations, also known as the ten-mil limitation. The Ohio Constitution and Ohio Revised Code stipulate that all overlapping taxing subdivisions, in our case, that would be Dublin City Schools, Washington Township, Suaco, the city, and each of the three counties that we reside in, the debt service collectively cannot exceed ten mils. We analyze this limitation every time we go to the bond market in preparing for that, as do all of the other entities, because we have to look collectively at the group as a whole to make sure the debt they are going to be undertaking does not kick it up that, above that ten-mil limitation. So, when we issued debt last fall, the way it shook out was that Union County was our most restrictive and given the debt that existed within all of those overlapping jurisdictions, there was approximately two-point-five mils of debt outstanding, which in our case translates into sixty-one-point-seven million dollars of additional debt. Now, that's not just additional debt that the city of Dublin could take on, it's with all of those entities. So, this really is a fluid process that is looked at. It changes every time assessed valuation in any one of those jurisdictions takes place. It also changes every time one of those jurisdictions equals or issues additional debt. But this, for the, for the sake of our discussion, is going to be our most restrictive component when it comes to debt. And finally, our third consideration is our own practice of allocating that sixty percent of the twenty-five percent to retire debt service. It's important to note that any amount that we are not utilizing for debt service can then be used to either cash fund projects or pay down additional debt. So, in looking at a similar chart as we did with the income tax and the cash funding allocation, using the same revenue estimates, this results in approximately twelve-point-seven million dollars to thirteen-point-seven million dollars per year over the next five years that is set aside in order to retire debt. The column marked debt payments reflects our actual debt payment that exists today by year and that amount ranges from four-point-three million dollars in two thousand and sixteen, it goes up to five-point-six and then by two thousand and twenty-one, it's back down to almost three-point-seven million dollars. So, this does not take into account any projected new debt that the city might take on. For all intents and purposes, for this year's CIP, as I just explained in the appropriation ordinance, we will be taking a fresh look at what, what we want to package together, what's appropriate to cash fund versus fund using debt. And then finally, the last column on, on the following slide reflects the debt, the portion of the debt allocation that is not committed. So, any surplus or excess that would be available from that sixty percent once you subtract out our known debt payments. If we look at the level of debt that that excess capacity could support, you can see that it ranges from eighty million dollars to one-hundred-and-twelve million dollars. So, this is using a conservative five percent interest rate for twenty years, which is generally speaking what we, the duration of time that we issue debt for. Please keep in mind that any debt taken on by the city reduces future excesses that are available. It is also important to note that this is irrespective of the statutory limitations on debt. So, while this slide, as pursuant to our own policy, says that we could take on, for example, in two thousand and sixteen, ninety-five million dollars worth of additional debt, we are bound by that Union County, the ten-mil limitation. So, there's really three things that we're juggling when we look at debt, the indirect, or the direct debt limitations, the ten-mil limitations, and then our own policy, all of which are changing consistently. Next, we will look at property tax revenues. So, I previously mentioned, our assessed valuation for this tax year is over two billion dollars, which would result in approximately three-point-five million dollars per year from our one-point-seven-five inside millage. Council in the past, since two thousand and ten, has allocated point-three-five mils to the Parkland Acquisition Fund, with the remaining going to the capital improvement fund. This translates into seven-hundred-thousand dollars a year in revenue for Parkland Acquisition and of that amount, we retire the MetroParks, our, we have an annual payment to the MetroParks for Glacier Ridge of three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars, which will expire in two thousand and seventeen. And additionally, we have the Kaufman Park debt, which comes out of this as well, which expires in two thousand and twenty. The remainder of the two-point-eight, the two-point-eight million dollars is in the capital improvement tax fund. Of the one-point-four mils allocated to the capital fund, the city has, in the past, reserved point-eight mils to retire debt associated with the thirty-three-one-sixty-one post-road interchange. To the extent this interchange is not constructed from year to year, or to the extent that we can reduce the amount that we have to pay towards that interchange, it frees up those dollars to go to cash fund projects. It is important to note that depositing revenue into the capital improvement fund doesn't preclude the city from purchasing Parkland. However, depositing funds into the Parkland Acquisition Fund does limit how those funds can be spent. Next, we will look at cash funding for projects using our reserves, specifically the general fund and the capital improvement tax fund. Our two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty CIP proposed within the five-year period approximately ten, ten-and-a-half million dollars to be used from the general fund reserve to fund the mid-century streets, a portion of the pedestrian bridge, and the water and sewer extensions. Additionally, we were proposing advances of slightly over four million dollars, which ultimately would be repaid for TIF revenues for the projects that you see listed there. In looking back over the past five years, our general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures has increased dramatically. Council's informal policy has been that our general fund should be at least fifty percent of our expenditures for the year, excluding advances. As we discussed during council goal setting, I will be bringing forward in August both a general fund reserve policy as well as a debt policy, but specifically, the general fund reserve policy will address and formalize this fifty percent reserve requirement and it will also propose to council an amount in excess of seventy-five percent that would get transferred over into the capital improvement tax fund. So, we will outline all of that in August. In the meantime, at the end of two thousand and fifteen, our fund balance was fifty-nine million dollars, which was almost ninety-eight percent of our expenditures. So, that excess is about twenty-nine-point-one million dollars above the fifty percent set aside. This chart just graphically represents what I had explained on the previous slide. I would also like to note that those amounts are not cumulative, so they don't just continue to add on year to year. So, to the extent that, for example, this year, if we used a portion of that twenty-three-point-three million dollars that existed at the end of two thousand and fifteen, that would not necessarily go back unless we had revenues exceeding expenditures in future years to make that grow again. So, once you spend out of the general fund reserve, it, it doesn't automatically replenish itself. Similarly, there are reserves that exist within the capital fund. However, however, these amounts are much lower. As of December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen, there was five-point-two million dollars unencumbered in that fund. This amount, or any remaining fund balance, gets rolled over from year to year and what we utilize that for are projects that possibly come up that were not programmed for, or change orders that have, that occur on projects that were underway last year. Things that you can't necessarily expect are going to happen. Moving on to our TIF service payments, as council is aware, whenever TIFs are created, we are required within the legislation to include the list of public improvements that will be funded using TIF revenues. So, those are outlined as part of each ordinance. This allows the service payments to be used to fund those improvements, as well as repay advances made from either the general fund or the capital fund. So, as I've explained before, because we do have in particular healthy fund balances within our general fund, we have been able to go ahead and undertake projects, get those underway with the expectation that as those TIF revenues come in over the course of thirty years, that we will repay ourselves for the advances made from either the general or the capital fund. As approved in the two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty CIP, there were approximately nineteen million dollars in projects that we were proposed using TIF funding for and the list is in front of you. Another, another source of revenue for our capital fund are advances being repaid. So, as I just mentioned, as those TIF revenues materialize and we can repay those advances, it really becomes a revenue stream for the originating fund. So, as we're looking at the capital fund, we would be looking at the TIF funds that are going to be repaying money to the capital fund and you can see those amounts range from nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen up to almost six, one-point-seven million dollars in two thousand and seventeen. So, we will update this each year as well as part of our CIP review. Improvements to our water and sewer systems are all funded through our water and sewer rates. Each year as part of the CIP and the operating budget, we look at the financial position of the funds and we take into account the extensive maintenance schedules that have been conducted on our systems, as well as any capital needs. We take into account existing debt that may exist. In particular, the sewer fund has a significant amount of debt in excess of a million dollars that will roll off in two thousand and eight for that Upper Sayota West Branch Interceptor. The rates go to pay the maintenance and the capital improvements to each of the systems and are generally done each, every two to three years. So, our last rates for two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen were approved by council in the fall of two thousand and fifteen. We would expect to bring forward rates for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen in the fall of two thousand and seventeen. Those rates will obviously take into consideration any improvements that are needed within the system. And then finally, we look at other sources of revenue. For example, our hotel motel tax fund, that revenue from that fund goes to make improvements to our Dublin Arts Council building, as well as pay the debt on that building, as well as the improvements we have funded through debt. Our permissive tax funds are used when available to pay for improvements to specific roadways. Similarly, with state highway funds, we obviously look for grant funding whenever available. So, all of these, our goal is to minimize the impact of the income tax revenues to free that up for other things. And then finally, develop our contributions or interest income. So, to summarize the revenues available to cash fund projects, putting all of the pieces that I just discussed here together, you have the income tax allocation, the forty percent that is to cash fund projects, and you can see that amount across the, the first row there. We have the debt allocation that is not committed to debt already existing, ranging from seven million dollars to ten million dollars. You have the property tax revenue that is not allocated directly to the Parkland Acquisition Fund. You see that going down in two thousand and twenty-one and that's because, based on the two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty CIP, we had funding for the interchange beginning in two thousand and twenty-one. So, the numbers you see throughout this presentation are reflective of last year's CIP, because over the course of the next month, we will be, as Dana mentioned, going through all of the projects and, and massaging those to come up with a workable CIP that we will be recommending to council. You've got the repayment of advances, interest income, and then in total, you've got an amount ranging from nineteen, almost twenty million dollars in two thousand and seventeen to over twenty-three million dollars in two thousand and twenty-one, just to cash fund projects. So, the only other thing I'd like to add is this total does not include transfers from the general fund, as we will be proposing within that general fund policy that we will discuss in August. And it's also important to realize that these shift. So, to the extent that additional debt is, is taken out, it reduces that debt allocation line. So, there, there really are moving parts to this. This is just a snapshot as it stands today, but the primary funding source being that income tax allocation, those are the numbers that you are going to see moving forward as part of the seventeen through twenty-one capital improvement program. We set a copy of the presentation at your desk. We realize this is a lot of information. For some of you, it's old news that you hear every year, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have or in the course of the next month, as you have a chance to digest it, just let me know if you have any questions. Can you send us a digital copy?
Of course.
Thank you.
Angel, we really appreciate the information and Dana, I really, really appreciate the schedule of events that you have, the second, third pages. At, at least for me, it helps me to visualize where we are at in the process. And if we stay committed to our goal at each stage, we will be more efficient at that particular goal and we will be more effective when we get to the end of the road. So, I think it's really, really important that we keep that all in perspective. And as always, Angel, your report is extremely thorough and very easy to follow, as terrifically complicated as it is. Does council have any questions?
I just, like to add, I don't remember we ever really formalized, which I really appreciate you doing on August tenth, the, or July fifth, council to submit additional project ideas by July nineteenth. We kind of threw it out, usually in August at the last minute. This is really very helpful, I think, and I appreciate you including us on that.
I, I appreciate that and I, I want to half apologize for a date, but the only reason for that is so we can, working into the mix of our analysis, obviously you can add whatever you want, whenever you want, but I, I appreciate that, putting that date on there so we can consider it, so.
The thing that we've, we've, we've learned over the years is that it's a very fluid, the CIP is extremely fluid. We move stuff back and forth. When I came on board twelve years ago... When I came on board 12 years ago, we had a brand-new city hall building planned out for, I don't know, $5, $10 million, or whatever it was, and we kept moving it back and moving it back, and there were other things that we thought were more important to accomplish, and we still haven't done it. And I think we made the right decisions along the way, because the projects that we did get done, infrastructure and such, really lent itself to being the kind of city we are today, so.
Angel, I just got to comment, you know, we were discussing infrastructure maintenance and, you know, how that is fitted or slotted into these future CIPs. Can you just make, refresh our memories on that, on how that's handled?
So traditionally, your maintenance-type projects are not projects that can be funded from any other sources, namely debt, because you don't want to issue debt to repave a street. So we reserve debt for truly those capital improvements that meet the definition. So that takes us to really looking at that 40% that's allocated to cash fund projects, and at a minimum, doing all of the maintenance-type things, which is why this year, we're taking a little bit of a different approach when it comes to outlining our projects. As Dana mentioned, we're going to be separating out maintenance versus new enhancements and new improvements, because we know that we need to be maintaining, it's exciting to do the new fancy things, but we also need to be maintaining what you have, because once you start to let that slip, it's very hard to get caught up. So by delineating it that way, hopefully, it's easier for council to see what improvements really need to be made at a bare minimum, just to maintain the city. We've got a great city that is kept in fine shape, but over the course of the past 20, 30 years, where we invested a lot of money in that infrastructure, we're now seeing the impact of that reaching its life and needing some maintenance to it.
Thank you. The only other thing I would add for council members who have seen the CIP process previously, you typically had a category that was major and non-major. You really won't see that, we don't think, in our format going forward. What you'll see in the list is by area, so you might see like parks and rec, transportation, bridges, culverts, things like that. There'll be some categories to put these things in, and it'll be maintenance and new construction or enhancement, which would be, an enhancement might be the reconstruction of an existing facility or something like that, but you'll, so that'll be a little bit different look for those of you who have seen it before, but trying to break it out that way.
Any other questions?
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Angel. Thank you, Dana. Staff comments, Dana?
Yes, thank you. A few things I wanted to highlight. In the packet of information that we gave you, there was one item that I needed some direction on that has to do with the roundabout. There's a memo that talks about the education effort about, regarding the new roundabout at 161 and Riverside Drive. That's going to be a little bit larger roundabout in terms of numbers of lanes that our residents and traveling public might be used to, so we are launching a pretty significant education effort about how to maneuver that in advance. So that's what this talks about. But then the other thing was, council had expressed some interest early, earlier about how do you want to celebrate that opening? I know there was some talk about maybe having a street festival or something like that, and so we came up with some options, ideas, do whatever you want, but we had a recommendation in here that I just wanted to know if you wanted to think about some more, if you wanted to give us your thoughts on it this evening, we would welcome that, but you don't have to have that done tonight if you're not.
The basic distinction was shutting everything down and doing something at the roundabout, or having something up at the shops.
Correct, that's fundamentally the difference.
That's fundamentally the difference. Does anybody have thought between those two things?
I don't think you want to shut down the roadway. I think that's going to be a logistical nightmare, and I'm sure chief doesn't want any part of that.
I think the best celebration is let people use the road and get out of the way.
I was counterintuitive to shut down the road to celebrate the road opening, but I didn't want to be captain obvious on that, but I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, you know, what you wanted. If you wanted it, that was fine, but I just wanted, logistically, it would be challenging.
And I think that John has volunteered to drive any citizen around any roundabout in the city of Dublin.
Several times.
To show them how to, so if anyone wants a ride, just call John.
So is that enough, Dana, for you to go?
Yeah, so it sounds like that's second bullet point with the...
Tim, he didn't say anything. He didn't want to close the road either, I don't think.
That the shops at River Ridge, sort of using that as our logistical point. Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. A few other items, I wanted to congratulate Angel and her team, as well as the rest of the staff, really, who contributes to that, for the great audit report that we received. I think she forwarded that out to you very clean, the cleanest audit report you can really find, so congratulations on that, as well as the distinguished budget presentation award for the 2016 operating budget, which was given by the Government Finance Official Association. I also wanted to congratulate the chief, and I want to thank our residents for their feedback on the police survey that went out. I thought the results of the survey were extremely positive. I won't go into the detail on that, that is in your packet, but great job, and hats off to the police department, and thank you to our residents for giving the positive and the informative feedback on that. Also, our, this is the night of awards, so I want to toot our horn a little bit here. Our fleet operation was named 18th Best Fleet in the country among public fleets. So that is an incredible honor to get when you consider you're competing against some of the bigger cities in the country, and certainly to Darryl Seiler and his group, appreciate his leadership there. I also want to recognize Officer Paul Burks, who received a Crisis Intervention Team Officer of the Year Award for the state of Ohio, to be called out for that on a statewide basis as significant. And last, Christine Ardechia, who received Outstanding Volunteer Administrator Award from her professional association, National Professional Association, and just very proud of all those folks. I can't help it myself but to call those out and raise them up, so, other than any questions you might have, that's all I have. Oh, I do have one other item, and I'll close with this one. We have been communicating with, and council member Keenan can chime in on this, as finance chair, and Angel mentioned, the general fund balance and debt policy. Going to bring that to you on August the 10th at the Finance Committee meeting, and we're going to consolidate two Finance Committee meetings into one that we would typically have, and rather than doing a verbal report on the status of finance, we'll issue you a staff report instead of a presentation, so we can spend more time talking debt policies. Is that consistent with?
Yeah, and we, I basically vetted that with the rest of Finance Committee, everybody's on board, so I think...
Great. Thank you for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Committee reports, P&amp;Z. Dana, it's with Amy being out, is there any staff comment on P&amp;Z that you wanted, any updates that are important or?
No, no.
Go ahead. Administrative Committee, Mike?
Have nothing.
Finance Committee, Mike?
Nothing.
Public Services, Amy's not here. Warpsy, Tim? How about Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing.
How about US 33 Innovation Corridor?
Likewise.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Wow. Somebody better say something important here. Board of Education, ladies?
Dr. Hodelly postponed our last meeting, so we have nothing to report, but we'll have a meeting scheduled again here shortly, I'm sure.
Washington Township, me, I see the chief back there, and Sarah, anything you guys want to fill us in on? How about that? Chief, anything you got to add? There we go. Council Roundtable, Chris?
Thank you. Had the opportunity to go to the Tantrum Theater on June 18th, and you know what, I knew it would be good, but I had really no idea of how good it would be. So I would just like to encourage folks to go and participate in that, because the quality of the presentation, I was shocked by, if you would, so some of the people in the audience had never been in the Tantrum Theater before, and the way that they were able to erect the stage, it turned that space into something that it never was, and I think they did a fantastic job, so I'm looking forward to their subsequent performances and having the opportunity to see those. On June the 20th, I had the opportunity to go for the ribbon cutting of the Sister Sweet Shop, and I was so encouraged by the way that they have done their outdoor space. They have done an excellent job, and they were very complimentary and flattering to staff and all of the people that had helped work on that, but, boy, they really, I met the fellow that was on the design team, it was just wonderful, so I would encourage people to go and see that outdoor space. It's really fantastic. When I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we approved the grand, and they had the business after hours there on the 21st, and it was, it just came out really nice, and got an opportunity to talk to Mr. Rabel, and was really impressed, they're, you know, rapidly filling up, and they've added a childcare facility there, neat business plan. And then Saturday, I'd like to congratulate the folks from the Kiwanis, because they put on a great frog jump on Saturday. It was really nice. There were so many kids there, and there were so many great things to do. They had inflatables, and they had, they put a lot of work into it, and they put on a fantastic event for the people of our community, so would like to congratulate them on that. That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you, Chris. Christine?
Thank you. I also wanted to say congratulations to the city of Columbus for being awarded the smart city. That's a huge deal, not just for the city of Columbus, but for our entire region, so that's great. I know Dublin was a big supporter, so thank you for helping them, it'll be a positive influence for all of us. I wanted to wish Todd and the Board of Education good luck, they're hunting for a new treasurer. I believe they have a vote on interviews tonight, it looks like that was what was on their agenda. I don't usually like to repeat it, but I totally want to echo Chris's comments on Tantrum Theater. I know there were several of us that went. Just an outstanding performance. My husband has not been to a musical, I think, ever in his entire life, and he was kind of dreading it, and he walked out of there saying, "We have to go to the other two." So that was, I mean, that right there should say something, so it was brilliant, we really enjoyed it. So I would encourage, if you guys didn't get an opportunity to go, go to the next two. Just fabulous. And then I'm done. Thank you.
Happy birthday. Got taken to task earlier for not signing the card, so thought it was appropriate that we do that, and for all you others who didn't sign the card.
And you think you just corrected?
I think I corrected it, yeah.
The hole just got deeper.
I was hoping. I just have one, one quick item for staff. I had to leave the bridge discussion last week to get to the airport. It went well over the time allotted, I think we were supposed to be out of there a little eight or a little after, and it went to 9:30. Where are we? What's, give me an update on where we're headed now.
Sure. We actually were pretty optimistic that we might be able to have information turned around as soon as your next meeting. I'm not going to yet commit to that for sure until I see the information, but I know staff's working very hard to see if we can make that deadline, that timeframe, because you have only the one meeting in July, but if need be, we will advance any reports back during July if we need to, to get information before you. So we are working really hard to get a response put together to the questions and things that were raised.
So timing-wise, construction, design, I know we had Army Corps of Engineer issues, da-da, you know, that whole?
Not going to, can't respond to that yet until I get some more information.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Tim?
Nothing other than to add my congratulations to staff for the many awards and recognition that they received. Take all the time you want in a meeting and elsewhere, you know, to acknowledge that, and that's, that's great. You know, it seems routine, because we receive some of the awards, but, you know, that's not without a lot of effort and energy and dedication, and I know we all appreciate it. Thanks.
John?
I just got to agree with Chris and Christina. You know, those of you who remember, the Kenley Players bringing all the great talent to central Ohio, I'd have to say, you don't have to go to New York and go to Dublin to see an unbelievably fantastic play. The stage sets were over the top, the rotating, I mean, is off-Broadway quality, you just can't believe it. Those people brought that here, and they're going to continue it here in our city. It was really that good, and anybody who has a chance should really go see the next productions. If they're anywhere near what they just put on with a little shop of horrors, which was totally professional, I've seen the real one, and it was just as good as Broadway, I thought, so, great voices, great stage sets, great everything, so my compliments to, I was just absolutely shocked to see something of that quality in that small of a theater. And that theater's great, because you're in really close proximity with the action, just like you would in an off-Broadway New York production. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and again, echoing my fellow council members' congratulations, you know, you go through this list of awards, and it just goes on. Community Relations honored by the Ohio Senate for tremendous attainment and Prisma Awards, I mean, it just goes on and on. There is one, though, that is conspicuously missing. I had the privilege of attending a lunch, was that last, that was just last week, where our own city manager Dana McDaniel was honored by the Ohio State University Alumni Association for an award, and anyone that has not had the opportunity to see Dana stand up and present himself at something like that, you should take up the next opportunity you have, because you talk about a calm, steady hand, that's what we have running this city, and I was very proud of Dana, I was proud of our city, I was proud of the presentation. He stands up and makes it look effortless, and it's through an entire lifetime of commitment to public service, so congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
And with that, we are adjourned.